Burger. In the end, last game of the game.
Thank you, Chairman Muller. Commissioners, Chairman Muller?
Yeah.
Commissioners Tonda?
Here.
Habib? Not present. Lake?
Yeah.
Wilson?
Yeah.
Kumar?
Here.
And Downey has an excused absence. Um, tonight's meeting agenda was duly noticed and posted in accordance with Government Code Section five four nine five four point two.
Okay. Uh, pledge of allegiance. Uh, Commissioner Lake, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
To that flag for the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. Nation and our God into this world. Justice as well.
Uh. Right now is the time for public comment. Members of the public are entitled to address the planning commission concerning any item within the Morgan Hill Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes, except for certain specific exceptions. The commission is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Jenna, would you please let people know how they can participate?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Muller. If you're joining us today using Zoom and wish to provide public comment, you may do so by using the raise hand feature. If you're calling in using your phone, you use the raise hand feature by dialing star nine and then dialing star six. You may also provide comments to us by emailing us at P C public comment at morganhill.ca.gov. Each speaker will receive three minutes. If you wish to speak on behalf of someone else, you'll you will receive one additional minute per speaker. If you are speaking on behalf of four or more people, our comments will be limited to a total of seven minutes. Please make sure to state each person's name for the record. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Jenna, do we have anybody wishing to speak?
And also Miguel and Susan Jimenez are logged in and would like to see their time.
Okay, great.
Good evening. My name is Joe Baranowski. I'm a Morgan Hill resident. I've lived here for about twenty-one years. It's a new year. But as they say, if you don't learn from your mistakes, they'll be repeated. And so for the next few meetings, I'm gonna be talking about two dates that are connected. I think they show something that was a very big mistake. It's important for this planning commission to understand. It's even more important for the community to understand. And we're gonna be outreach into the community in other ways as well. I didn't get my slide in in time to project it, but I did send it out. Um, it should look familiar to you. It kind of looks like um, a general plan, uh, uh, zoning, uh, uh, or zoning code map. On May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, the planning commission approved the Redwood design permit by a vote of six to one. But during that meeting, the chair, the now chair asked some important questions. For example, he asked, what was the check that this project is consistent with the general plan? In particular, in terms of traffic or noise or any other thing? Nothing was given to us other than saying it is consistent with it. We don't have any information. I'm just really uncomfortable with not having any information on a site like this, right? What were the traffic assumptions that were in this? Other than saying it is consistent, we are given no information about that. Now, the staff gave a bunch of different answers, but they were all along the same lines. This is one of the quotes. Geez, I'm not understanding your concern with it because what the general debt plan did was analyze the allowed uses there, the retail, the offices, the warehouses. Now, the other six members of the commission at that time were pretty much looking at the chair. Ben, like, geez, what's going on here? You know, keep with the program. If you want to make an amendment, make an amendment. Otherwise, get with the program. The commissioner called it, quote, cut and dry, simple stuff. Another commissioner asked, is the general plan E I R available? Now, and one commissioner, and this this will who's not present tonight, which we'll tie into part to the November eighth, twenty twenty-two date, did say that he relies on you guys, meaning the staff. I don't have the expertise to really analyze it at the level you did. If you tell me as a staff that is consistent, I'm just going to trust your advice and judgment that it is. Now, during the Cochran Commons Phase Two approval process, if you look at that traffic study, something, a light bulb went off. Who recognized that what the developer was planning to do and eventually was approved? It's not the same as in the general plan. There was a sentence in there that says, the intensity of what's proposed is different. Now, common sense, right? Let's use some common sense here. Why was the commissioner asking these simple questions? Did you really think that there was a crystal ball in twenty fifteen? And that when they did the traffics, that's the E I R, the general plan E I R, seven years ago? They just knew Trammell Crowe was gonna come along? The five hundred ten thousand square foot, seventy doctor facility at that location? Does it, does that make sense? Or adjusting between what was in the general plan and what's being proposed, it actually happens all the time. Now, Commissioner Muller was confused because he's right. You won't find anything in the general plan or the general plan E I R that says what the assumptions were. The traffic consultant knew for Cochran Commons Phase Two. This map that I sent, and I'll I'll have it displayed next time, is called a traffic analysis zone map, a TAS. This is a map that shows TAS. Now, the correspondence between the TAS and A P N is not one-to-one, but for every A P N, there is a TAS, it's easy to determine. What the staff told you that night, it's a lie. Not a difference in interpretation. Not, it's close. It was a big lie. He knew it then. It was included in the Redwood site location. And the twenty thirty-five general plan E I R was not five hundred ten thousand square foot massive warehouse. As this diagram shows, was included with seventy-six thousand square feet of R and D and nine thousand square feet of office.
Mr. Baranowski, your time is up?
That's what was included. At the next meeting, when I have time, we're gonna talk about how the reality, how that big lie ties into what happened on November eighth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't see any more speakers.
Okay, with that, I'll close the open public comment. And we'll move on to our only business item of tonight, which is a twenty twenty-two legislative update. And who? Jennifer gets to do it? Okay.
With, um.
Okay.
Um, there we go. The state did a lot last year during the legislative session. There were nine hundred and ninety-seven laws passed and signed by the governor. A lot of them relating back to housing. We're not gonna go through all of those tonight. Uh, we're, we pulled out a number of the housing laws that most affect the city. Um, we're also doing this presentation tomorrow night at city council, but it will be further condensed from what you're seeing tonight. Um, we've also provided some guidance, guidance documents from M T C A bag related to A B twenty-eleven and S B six. It compares the two pieces of legislation as well as a detailed list of all the housing laws passed that um, A BAG and M T C wanted us to be aware of, just so you have that as reference. So we'll talk about the first one, and this is the big one. It doesn't go into effect until July one, um, but this is a piece of legislation that allows commercial land to flip to housing. Um, and there's two ways that this can happen. Through A B twenty-eleven, it would happen as a ministerial decision, which means no planning commission, no council, no SEQA, no nothing. They'd be able to come in if they meet the criteria to qualify, and that criteria is very extensive. They cannot be within five hundred feet of the freeway. They couldn't be near industrial land. They couldn't be in a flood zone or a fire zone. There's a big list, as you see on that comparison chart. Um, and it's, it's gonna be a challenging one for a lot of communities. We believe in Morgan Hill that the P Ds protect from this rule. Um, we'll see if that holds true, if anybody does desire to use any, either love these laws to move forward for residential in the future. Um, we have done some analysis. There are very few pieces of land that are not under a full P D. Um, commercial pieces of land, let me say that, that are not under a full P D or, um, otherwise hold out of consideration due to the geographical restrictions in the law. Um, A B twenty-eleven is, is sort of like an S B thirty-five. It creates a ministerial approval, very cut and dry. Um, the qualifying criteria is based on affordability, whether it's rental or owner. Um, our local inclusionary requirements, if fifteen percent affordable, would still apply. Um, if we had greater than that, that would apply as well. Local would prevail in this case. S B six is a little bit different, allows the flip, but makes them go through a normal process. They have to do SEQA. They would have to look at, um, our objective standards, but they are allowed to invoke S B thirty-five in this case too. So it's kind of here, it's a little bit weird. Um, they did it this way on purpose. There was a lot of debate on these laws as they came forward. They were trying to come to some sort of compromise solution so they wouldn't have two laws that did the same thing, but in different ways. Um, and labor could not come to an agreement. So they ended up with two, wanna give developers a choice, and that's why we have both of these laws to consider. But everyone's really happy and and all the, all the planning world was thrilled that we at least have until July one, so we can wrap arms around this. Make sure we know where this could be invoked, um, and get prepared for it, not like the January ones where we don't have a lot of time. So as I go through this, happy to stop and answer questions?
Yeah, yeah, so, um. And Jennifer, it seems like what this is trying to do is to take all uh, commercial space or retail space that's on use and be able to quickly convert it to mixed use or residential. Did I get it right? Just to like improve the, the housing inventory in California? Is that the intent?
Yes, it's to give additional tools and options for the development community to, to build housing.
It's had vacancies there for years. And, uh, and I guess it's the economic situation of supply and demand. Could that shopping center, just as an example, uh, take some of those large areas that are apparently not viable for retail? And go through a process of converting those into residential?
It just did. Um, so they have a P D that protects from these rules that we believe they would protect from these rules, but they just recently went through a P D update, uh, Plan Development Amendment in order to allow residential on the phase two side of the property.
I think you said Cochran Plaza, not Cochran Commons, right?
I'm trying, I don't know which, uh.
Walmart and Cochran Plaza.
Okay, okay. Um, it's also protected by a P D as well.
What does that mean, the, uh, P D, meaning it requires city approval? Or it's allow them just to proceed ahead and to convert it?
P D is a overlaid zoning district that's created to manage the development of that land. And what we've done historically in Morgan Hill is P Ds are on a lot of rather large lots of property. And it, as the P D's developed, you're able to create a specific zoning district and exceptions to our existing standards built into that that allows folks to develop maybe in a different way.
But it's also like a negotiated.
It is a negotiated, yeah.
So that it's, it's protect, I think I'm gonna translate in my language. Because it's a negotiated zoning district with the applicant in the city, it probably protects us from commercial land that is just broad, commercial land with no P D over the top.
It's, it's closely related to a development agreement in the sense that everyone has to agree it's passed as an ordinance. It's, I don't know, Cynthia, did you want to add anything?
No, Commissioner Mueller is, is correct in, in the way he's explaining it is because it was a negotiated agreement. It is not just a zoning that anybody can come into. There's conditions that they must follow. There are certain things that they must agree to. Um, and so the interpretation is that that P D will control over, um, uh, just the regular zoning.
Okay, so as I understand it, because it's a negotiated agreement versus just a straight zoning, that this new law will not really have any impact on a property like Cochran Walmart?
That is our opinion. And as you know with everything, especially with new laws, opinions can be challenged. And whoever gets challenged on this, that case law will further define how this law is gonna be implemented.
H C D has not released, released their technical guidance yet, and so we don't know, you know, what they may come out with as well, but we'll provide uh, additional guidance to us as well. Um, and additionally, the property owners would have to be agreeable to wanting residential within these shopping centers. It would also need to be able to meet the building code. It's not clear if some of these older commercial structures that are all connected would even um, be able to be converted to residential. So I think, you know, waiting for the H C D guidance may end up changing our opinion right now, but that's, that's our understanding of how it's written up today.
Now, could I ask just one question?
Of course.
In, in regards to that particular P D, it's voter approved?
On the Walmart piece, absolutely.
Right, on the Cochran.
Yeah, that, that area.
Shopping center is voter approved? Will that play a role in any of this or not? And do we even know?
We don't know.
That's good. Or not good, but you know, it's fair.
I, I think one of the, the big ideas around this, um, that I've read about is one of the the proliferation of shopping malls that are no longer really working in the same way that they, they thought they would, and some areas have added housing on the fringes, but this would allow these to actually flip and add housing within it. Um, that's just one example, but there's areas all over. Um, not necessarily here, but farther north where it's much more appropriate to see that type of flip.
And Jennifer, don't you think also, for example, a lot of the high-tech companies because of, you know, post-pandemic, a lot of people are working from home. And a lot of the real estate that a lot of the tech companies have are empty. And they're trying to offload it, but there are no other larger companies ready to just come in and take that up because they're also working from home. But they can actually flip those spaces now and provide residential. So it gets that wasted inventory like moving again, uh, uh, just not just helping the housing element, but construction, labor, economy, just activity would, would help.
And I was on a call with, um, one of the, uh, sponsors of A B twenty-eleven, and it was really about looking at innovative solutions and tools to get new housing in where we've never really looked at it before. And that was at least that, why that one was developed in the way that it was, so.
Jennifer, a quick question as well. So what type of base residential zoning would then apply? You know, whether it be residential attached, residential detached, R A L three thousand, six thousand? So do they get to then choose which type of residential, um, zoning would apply to that commercial location?
We're still trying to wrap our arms around what, what would that mean? The fact that they're able to use S B thirty-five could actually create some other issues as well as density bonus. So we'd have to look at how many laws they can layer, uh, for someone who's gonna use this tool. That's why they give us a little more time before implementation. So. All right, now we're into laws that are currently in effect. A B twenty ninety-seven is the big parking requirement or lack thereof law that passed. It no longer allows parking requirements to be required or enforced um, on any development, housing, residential, commercial, industrial. And so long as within one half mile of a major transit stop. The law actually also includes, um, high-quality bus routes, ferry terminals, those don't apply to Morgan Hill, only our transit station, um, applies here under the definition. We have a lot of debate, and I won't go into my personal opinion on our transit station and the level of service and what that should mean, but the definitions under state law do qualify it under this rule. The bus stops do not. We, under the, under the law, it needs to be an intersection of two bus routes that operate at a fifteen-minute interval during peak hour. We have one that has changed to a fifteen-minute interval for the most part during peak hour, but there's no intersection. Um, so we, we don't have to worry about that at this time. So a city may require parking if we can make certain findings, and those findings have to be directly related to three different things. Either we have to be able to find a substantially negative impact related to the ability to meet extremely low or very low renter. Special housing, um, needs of the elderly or disabled or existing residential or commercial parking within a half mile. Of course, as with many laws, we were talking about this before the meeting, substantially negative impact is currently undefined within the law. And so that will also be a definition that will be refined as people try to use this or make these findings and then are challenged. Um, where you cannot use these findings is where development projects with twenty percent affordable and or fewer than twenty units would be developed. There is no there there with, um, using these findings to be able to require parking. Now, what we're seeing are folks coming into the city that may be able to use these types of, of laws or parking requirement exceptions, but they're not. And they're, they're looking at providing parking regardless because they know parking is needed. Um, we were looking at some of the numbers in the census, just out of curiosity about, uh, vehicle ownership or vehicle access. And three percent of this city in the last American Community Survey does not have access to a vehicle. The California standard is six percent. So it's, we really, most, most, um, if I remember the numbers correctly, forty-one percent of households have more than two cars. So it's very clear that those vehicles are needed until we have that service. Now, it's the chicken and the egg kind of saying you need a lot of people in order to be able to prove that you need the service. But what is the impact on the community until you get the service? And so I think it's gonna continue to be a struggle with our rail system, um, improving the bus lines and trying to figure out a way to really provide transit in the city to job centers and other places where people need to go. So this next law, A B twenty-two thirty-four, I think this has caused the most internal angst for a lot of different cities. Um, anyone who's familiar with the Permit Streamlining Act that puts timelines on entitlements, how long we have to determine completeness on an application, how quickly SEQA has to be done, how quickly things have to move through to a decision point. This law now puts this on the post-entitlement permits. Building permits, grading permits, off-site improvements, permits, um, demolition permits. It's a very tight timeline. We have fifteen days to determine whether something's complete. And then if it is less than, um, less than twenty-five units, we have thirty business days to approve the permit. Sixty business day, uh, days for more than twenty-five units. Um, it's, it's raised the level on the building permit side of processing. We have to provide written material to the applicant when we deem it incomplete with exactly what they need to submit. We have to, if it's not approved, we have to give them a solution as to what they have to do to get it approved. Um, the timeline will have to be tracked as a chess clock, just like the Permit Streamlining Act. When you give it back to the applicant, you get to hit the button, and then you go back and forth a little bit, and but you cannot exceed those business days for approval.
Seems like if you miss the deadline, it gets approved.
It gets approved. Now, there are some cases where it's deemed approved, but the city may not want it approved. And then you get into some complicated issues with the Housing Accountability Act, and someone could take the city, um, to court sue for the approval. Um, there's fines attached under the Housing Accountability Act that are rather large, and they're per-unit fines. Um, but that's a little bit down the line. I don't know, Cynthia, if you wanna detail any of that? Yeah.
Question?
Yes.
Uh, when does this law take effect?
It's currently in effect.
And what is the projected impact on both city staff as well as developments?
I believe it's, it's a we're wrapping our arms around it now, but it's a fairly large impact. It only relates to housing. Doesn't relate to any other permit. Um, but I think our building team is really looking at different ways of handling building permits, looking at that completeness, trying to figure out how we can use our track-it system to really kind of set it up to make it easier to look at completeness versus conformance. Um, the, our engineering team has an opportunity to do an ordinance that would define what off-site improvement permits would fall under these rules. They can define what is minor standard and what is major. Um, and they're also trying to wrap their arms around that as well. The way this law is written, it has, it goes into effect immediately in January. However, by January, by twenty twenty-four, we have to have certain things available to the public, a list of everything that's required to file a permit, examples of approved permits, and, um, other material available to apply online, um, for those permits. So when this law first came out in November, December, people saw that twenty twenty-four, the professional organizations that are helping get folks to understand it, they saw that the twenty twenty-four date and say, oh, we got time. Not realizing that it actually went into effect on January one. So we were really kind of bringing everybody together. We've had several meetings, um, with the overall development services team, just to make sure that we know, um, how we're moving forward. And we've had some single-family homes and smaller projects that we've been able to use as, okay, we're tracking, how are we gonna do this? Let's gear it up before we get a large housing project come through the door. Because that's gonna be the true test.
So with the other foot drops with the one that's post-entitled, right?
Yes.
And so while you're trying to wrap your hands around this, are we really gonna be staffed, right?
This is already in effect.
I understand, but, but the host entitlement one is coming up too, which says you got really tight timelines.
That, that's what's in effect already. So we're, we're using the staff that we have to make sure that we're able to meet the times. I think building is, is in a great place. Um, engineering is really looking at the challenges of, of how to process projects when housing always jumps to the front. Um, and it's, that's across the board. Our commercial and industrial projects will be held because housing has to meet these timelines. Um, and we're hoping it won't be a significant, it won't be a significant hold, but it's, it's gonna be something that we're gonna need to evaluate, and staffing will be part of that. Um, every, but both of those divisions, every division can use more people in the city. We're all, we all have a lot to do. Um, more people would help, but we're looking at the resources that we have and trying to make them the most efficient in order to meet these guidelines. Well, they're not guidelines, it's the law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only question, I guess my question is, uh, some things can be delayed and it has an impact. uh, some things can be delayed and it has an impact, right? But we don't get sued or we don't get fined per unit, right? And so it has other consequences and somehow we got to make sure that these two things get juggled right or we add or have staff available that we can call on to make sure that we get
Right.
the right things done that we need to get done.
Absolutely.
Right?
We have, right, like our building team has a third party agency that helps with plan checks. You know, looking at using that more efficiently for some projects. We've seen cities get tangled up in housing accountability cases. Los Altos was one on an S B thirty five case and I think it was, it was going to be in the millions, like, like around ten million dollars as far as the overall lines and costs and everything else. But I could go back and pull those articles if you'd like to see them, but it's, it's something we don't want to get to. And our goal has always been, we, we don't have to worry about the legal side of it if we're doing the work and getting it done. This law does include some findings that we can make if there needs to be additional review time. There's public safety reasons, you know, if, let's say that those adverse impact that could happen because maybe the plans just really aren't great, but they were complete and we're trying to make sure. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not sure what scenario would be, would work for that. But it does provide for that. But that also can be challenged and appealed, but it does give a little bit more time should you end up having to go through that process. It's, it's a lot. And it, it's still, it was just interesting how different the, the approach on, on implementation was. And even a lot of the, my planning colleagues in the, in the business, they also thought it was twenty twenty four. Everyone just saw that date and assumed. And it wasn't until, I, I had let you know that we had sat in multiple webinars with representatives from Cal Cities, A B A G, M T C, different lawyers who were presenting, and I would just throw the question out. Is it in effect? Is it in effect? Is it in effect? And we got consistent yeses. We're like, okay, we're good. Let's run with it and see what we can do to make sure that our process meets the requirements. So these are the things that have to be posted on our city website by January first of twenty twenty four. And this year of implementation is what gets us to the point where we can actually do this and have everything ready to go, the list of everything that needs to be submitted. An example of an approved application for five different types of projects and then the website for application. We do have a track, our track it system does have an E track it module. We'll be able to utilize that for future applications. And interestingly, that we have to post the plans on a website that show exactly how to do a building permit. We have twelve fourteen, S B twelve fourteen, that does not allow that anymore without a release from the architect or designer. We're not allowed to post drawings of projects for public consumption unless we get a release or we get some sort of okay from that on the copyright in order to display them. An applicant who wants to invoke this law can also include a massing study, which is really just the boxes of what you're really dealing with on the site. And that is what gets distributed as public information. You can come into the building and look at, at plans, but we're not supposed to be putting them out in a way that where they can be copied for reproduction. And so we're looking at our website, we're looking at ways to lock down PDFs so you can't screenshot or copy or other things. Everyone's looking at different tools. Some cities have just instituted a waiver that people have to sign to apply. Other cities are scrubbing their website of every plan that they have on it. Implementation is, is going to be a challenge on this one. But we think if, if people are willing to have their plans displayed, they just sign a waiver or a release and then we're able to make sure folks have that information. How it works, would they be twenty two thirty four and twenty twenty four? I don't know. Maybe we'll have better technology on locking down those PDFs. So you can look at them, but you can't copy them.
Yeah, I know there's ways of doing that.
No, there is. And, and I've been on websites with graphics where you go to copy it and won't let you. And it's just what, what tools do we need to have on our website in order to make that happen? So.
I've seen it applied to pictures on news sites.
Right, absolutely. So this next law is a cleanup on S B thirty five. And this one was a little disappointing for staff to see because it clarifies that S B thirty five projects cannot be subject to any permit requirement. As far as we can't make them go through design review, we can't make them go through tree permitting, no variances, no C U Ps. Well, C P's were always given under S B thirty five, no site review. It is a, it really makes S B thirty five an over the counter permit. And it will be a challenge and as far as any future application that comes in the door. Because it also prohibits local agencies from determining that a development is in conflict with our objective planning standards when they don't supply the materials to show that they're consistent with our objective planning standards. This, this law contains the, the wording that so long as the application contains substantial evidence that would allow a reasonable person to conclude that the development is consistent with our objective planning standards, that's all they need to provide. It really, it changes the game on S B thirty five. And we must know, we must provide an applicant with a written explanation where we don't believe they meet our standards in order to say no. And so we, we have to do that now, but I think it's going to be a lot harder if we can't see the actual plans to make that judgment. It's, it's going to be a challenge.
That also mean that our ordinance that was passed that says a hundred units or more has to have a design review?
Correct.
Is invalidated for S B thirty five projects?
Yes. Any, any, so our tree removal permits, they don't have to get them. It's, it's all of our non discretionary, none of, other, any other non legislative discretionary approval, they do not have to do anymore under S B thirty five.
What does S B thirty five project mean? What does that mean? Is it a specific type of project or?
Is a specific type of project. It is a over the counter ministerial project. So that was established in twenty twenty one. It really is meant to have someone walk in the door with an application, staff review it, give them their approval. There's no CECL required. And now there's no other permits that we can require.
So now you don't require design review permit, psych review, tree permit, all that stuff is no longer required?
Required with this cleanup. We do require it. We had required it before.
Right.
Yeah. And we do have one application that has started the process. So we'll just have to see what they come back with. We had given them comments and sent them on their way. And well, we don't know where, where that is going to end up. So it's, again, it ties to that. Give as many tools to future applicants and that was the goal of cleaning up S B thirty five. S B thirty five also changes the rules on parking as far as we have the major transit stop and a lot of definitions on when you don't have to do parking. The guidelines that H C D has issued for S B thirty five also say if there is a car share space within five hundred or a thousand feet, you don't have to provide parking if there is certain other scenarios where you wouldn't necessarily have to do parking. I don't imagine we'll, well, before this rule, I didn't imagine we would see many S B thirty five applications outside of the boundary, the half mile boundary of the transit station. But this may make it that we could see more in different locations. But S B thirty five also has geographic requirements as far as no flood zones, no fire zones, you have to be close to this or that. And you never thought that fire zones and flood zones would be a benefit, but it does actually help sort of restrict just how much people can do. And our flood zones right now are still fairly detailed along the Monterey corridor, so. So accessory dwelling units, there were a lot of new laws on accessory dwelling units this year. They really wanted to make this type of housing easier. We've came to the planning commission with an ordinance in December that was later adopted by council. All of these new laws or new requirements have already been included within our code. They can be in detached garages. You can have two detached ADUs with a multifamily building. It increases height limits based on the location of the A D U and also allows them in the front yard if you can't fit them anywhere else. So long as you can get an eight hundred square foot unit built.
When you say front yard in like my front lawn?
Yes.
Really?
Yes. You, you would have to not be able to fit it anywhere else on your property. And then you could opt for the front yard.
There are a couple of front yard ones in Morgan Hill.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, actually. So that green space or brown space that we currently have in front of our houses, that's, you know, that's, that's doable once you don't have the water space.
So we do have some, some homes in town that have very small backyards, but larger front yards, they could benefit from that.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay.
And some were built earlier as new build. They built a unit there, I think, as part of the original plan.
One good thing out of all of these laws is we used to have an owner occupancy requirement for A D Us, which meant you had to live in the A D U or in the primary structure or you couldn't rent it out. And that rule is coming back in twenty twenty five. So that'll be nice, even though you have an awful lot that right now the rules are you can rent both out and not be on site. Which then you've created a de facto duplex in a single family zone. However, our S B nine rules that we talked about in previous legislative updates have sort of eliminated single family zoning because you can now have four units on a lot under S B nine, so. One other thing, the construction of the A D U will not trigger a requirement to sprinkle the whole building or the primary dwelling. And they've established some requirements that if we're a permit to legalize an unpermitted A D U constructed prior to two thousand eighteen, we can't deny it unless it is a substandard building and correcting the violations are necessary for protecting health and safety.
Answer the question.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Do these, do these new set of laws have any impact on the side setbacks or the front setbacks for A D Us?
Yes, it's four feet for any A D U, yes.
But didn't we go through that when we? So it's already in our code.
And if, just hypothetically, a, a unit is built right up to the setback and it's been grandfathered and it's been there a long time?
And if it was unpermitted, then yeah, we could issue, we, we could do it. I think this new rule about the legalizing the two thousand eighteen, anything before two thousand eighteen, it's a way to do amnesty. And we have talked about doing an amnesty program in the city where we put the word out, if you have an unpermitted A D U, come in here, go through building, it'll be a minimum fee. We won't charge you code compliance for, just to make sure that we have housing product that is safe. We haven't gotten to that point yet of actually instituting that program, but that is something that we have thought about doing. There are a lot of A D Us out there that we don't know about. And when you get into homes sometimes and you look around, you're like, whoa, I don't think that's, okay, we need to work on that. Let's, let's get back and do that. At least in my old city, that happened a lot. And the last thing is a completed A D U or junior A D U application must be approved or denied within sixty days of receipt. Unless it's being built with a single family home or multi unit building at the same time.
Jennifer, what were the previous height limits for A D Us? And what are they now? Because it mentions between sixteen to twenty five feet depending on location.
Right, we have them set, I, I believe, I'd have to pull the, the code. Let me, let me do that while we're sitting here talking. I don't think the language has been codified in our online code yet. And he's asking, he's asking what it was. Let's just see.
Yeah, just curious what, if it was like a substantial difference from what it was before to what it is now?
Yeah, our normal accessory structure heights are, are twelve feet. To sit within the setbacks, you can be taller, but then you have to meet setbacks. But let's pull those numbers just to see. A lot of times with our online code, it can take some time for codification to take effect. That's why we're able to go back in the history real quick and look.
And all of these A D U changes are as of January first?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's why we came to you in December to make sure that those were included in the code so we can have that taken care of. I don't think we had a height. I think it was and sixteen feet. Was, was the maximum height at the time, yeah.
Okay.
Twenty five feet that it, it changed to is a lot. It was meant to give an attached A D U the ability to sort of work with the roof line and take advantage of the overall size of the house.
It's like two stories or something. Okay.
And there's been a lot of, of houses that were the A D Us on top of the garage. And so that also, that height limit also helps with that as well.
So if the A D U is on the ground, how, how high does it?
It could still be two stories.
Okay.
So for A D Us, no separate zoning clearance or zoning review can be required. We have to look at the A D Us as part of the building permit application. And that's where we do the, the site review. If we deny it, we have to give an itemized list of reasons. And we also can, it requires concurrent review of demolition on A D U permits when a garage is being converted, a detached garage is being converted. Any other questions?
It was a detached garage.
That can be converted and the parking does not have to be replaced. That is an old rule, not with this new settlement.
It's pretty updated, okay.
Okay. So this is another one. It confuses people because it's A B twenty three thirty four, not twenty two thirty four. And this one also has a standard, it's actually a formula that we're trying to figure out what it really means to the city. So this allows a hundred percent affordable projects to have unlimited density if it's located within a very low vehicle traffic area. And that is a formula that is the vehicle miles per capita are less than eighty five percent of either the regional or city miles traveled per capita. So we need to generate some of those measurements and figure out whether there are any areas of the city that would fall into this rule. Again, a hundred percent affordable only qualify for this. And there isn't a income level on the affordability that would be applicable here. It could be moderate. And we'd have to, probably we're going to have to generate a map showing if we do have any of these areas in town. And again, with, with a lot of our housing rules, if the density allowed and the zoning ordinance is inconsistent with the density, the greater shall prevail. So it's really a push on maximizing the number of units that are allowed in different areas of the city.
Jennifer, a quick question on this one too. So I believe one of the projects that came in that was a higher density was limited by what the firefighters' ladders go, I think. Is that something that's similar in this case in which, you know, they can't go beyond what our fire service can provide? Fire suppression for?
That's interesting comment because we've had further conversation with our fire department and they don't believe that there needs to be a limit based on the ladder. There's other ways to deal with fire service. Which we were like, really? No? Are you sure? Can we use the ladder? Because that would really limit what we could do. But that was the idea under a different fire marshal, a different administration and things change over time. So. We are working with them on their standards and what they absolutely have to have. Access is key for our fire department. And sometimes we get a site plan in where they need the circulation around the building. Certain points of access is not enough. And it really, their review is, is really what matters. You know, when we get down to how the buildings are going to be laid out on a site, making sure that they have full access. So AB six eighty-two is a density bonus law about shared housing. And this is for different types of housing like cohousing, which is, do everyone, does everyone know what cohousing is? This is a housing product where folks have private, sometimes private homes, but communal living. A communal kitchen, a communal center, community center. We had, have one kind of like that with the old version of Depot Commons. Individual living spaces, but a communal central kitchen area for folks. We don't really have any cohousing projects in the city at this time. But it is something where if you do develop that type of shared housing and you have those common kitchens, those types are eligible or to be developed in the future for the density bonus program. AB fifteen fifty-one is a commercial density bonus, and this is something that's been brought back. It expired in 2022. They put it back on the books. Also, I believe to help some of our shopping centers and other areas that are really struggling. So you get additional commercial space, maybe increased FAR. If you're doing housing, you get that extra bonus of commercial space. It's an agreement between the developer and the city and the county. So essentially you're probably looking at a DA development agreement as that runs through. And then if the affordable units as part of this project aren't constructed, then the city can hold certificates of occupancy in the future. And this is in effect until 2028. This particular law, AB twenty-three thirty-nine, is a big law, but luckily does not affect Morgan Hill. This changes where emergency shelters can be located and requires that cities pick sites and residential zones for emergency shelters. This is for any city that has not turned in a housing element draft to HCD prior to January thirty-first of this year. We are not, we, our draft went in late, last year, actually, in the fall of last year. So we're way outside of this, but it will affect a lot of communities in the state who are really struggling to get their housing elements done. I know some are doing the big rush to get the review started. Others are in the process and, and they don't, this will not apply to them either. But right now, emergency shelters are allowed in our public facility zones. And you're not allowed to put them in industrial zones. So. Creating residential areas or residential zoning where these can be, you see a lot of that on the news. Fremont recently had a transitional center that made the news because the neighbors were very concerned about whether what was located and, and it was no school. So it, it's something that each community will have to figure out moving forward. And then our housing element annual progress reports, these are required to be submitted every year on, by April first. We have gotten more and more complicated every year. And this year we had a number of laws passed that add even more detailed information. They have to be supplied for these reports. There is a, there is a potential penalty. If they're not submitted on time, you can hold grant money, the state can hold grant money if they're not submitted on time. There could also be reports to the attorney general if they're not submitted on time. There's a large list of, of penalties if we don't get it in. This has gotten so complicated that we have started a report in prepping for it by attending webinars and online education because that is what the team is required to do in order to understand everything we have to put in this form now. We have a team of four, myself, a principal planner, Adam, and the housing team that really, the housing team does most of this work, gathering all the data, looking at all of our units. And it is a good, I would say, two-month process getting the form filled out. At unfunded mandate. So. It is, it is really complicated and I think this is just this year's loss. We're gonna have more questions and more issues that we'll have to report on in the following year. And this goes, this is tied also to our general plan, annual report, those going on the same date. The housing element is of course a part of the general plan, but the rest of the general plan does not have these types of requirements on it. But that is all I had tonight. I know it's kind of a downer, but I'm happy to answer any other questions on the new housing laws, any other issues you may have of concern. And Cynthia is here, Edith is here. We're here to provide information.
Yeah. Jenna, let's open a public comment on this update.
Yes, I'd like to remind everyone, if you're joining us today using Zoom and wish to provide public comment, you may do so by using the raise hand feature. If you're calling in using your phone, you can use the raise hand feature by dialing star nine and then dialing star six to speak. You can also send us an email at PCpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov.
Do we have anybody who wishes to speak on this?
We have one speaker on Zoom, Renee Baez.
Okay.
Go ahead, Renee.
Yeah, Renee Baez, thank you. Good evening, Chair, staff and members of the planning commission. I want to first thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Renee Baez and I represent the NorCal Carpenters Union. I'm here today to speak about three simple things which will benefit the, the housing element and everything that's going on. There's a lot of great laws, a lot of detailed laws, a lot of stuff that doesn't sound great. But we're excited. The one I'm mostly excited about is AB twenty-eleven just because it has labor standard and pre-qualification language. And I think that's very important in, in this time because we're experiencing a lot of projects and, and housing elements and think commercial buildings that are being built where there's a lot of wage theft and, and things that are happening under our watch and, and I think it's very unfortunate. So today I want to just talk about the three basic labor standards I believe should be. One, the use of apprenticeship programs, meaning every worker is trained to do the work correctly and also safely. Number two, that's healthcare for all workers and their families. And number three, which is local hire. You know, as, as many members of the community and workers are forced into super long commutes, I believe local hire policy can help bring stability to families and the community, ensuring workers can spend more quality time with their families and also participate in civic and community life instead of spending valuable time stuck in traffic. Now, when it comes to healthcare, construction workers, particularly those not represented by a union, are much more likely to lack healthcare and rely on government safety net programs, depleting what, what is already overburdened. So policies that require contractors to offer their workers healthcare will raise standards in the construction industry while also ensuring that employers who do offer healthcare can compete on a level playing field. So it's just one of those things where I gotta mention labor area standards when it comes to the housing element and AB twenty-eleven and, and SB thirty-five. I know there's some things that are being worked out with those. But I'm excited about the air, the labor standards that are on those projects. Thank you for your time.
Questions? Is there anybody else?
I don't see any more hands.
Okay, and I'm just gonna ask, because I didn't remember the last name, any emails?
There are no emails.
Okay, I'll close the public comment and we'll come back for, I guess, questions at this point. Any more questions? I've got one, and I think we talked about it earlier. In this very low vehicle traffic area, it gives you a reference standard and what that is. But it doesn't tell you what the area is you're using for this.
Right.
For this particular project.
Correct.
So it could be right down at just that very project is the only thing you're looking at compared to the standard.
We don't know. I think, you know, the guidance documents that HCD prepares are something that are very beneficial. They take a while to be developed though. Sometimes you'll get some guidance from different land use attorneys who have already looked at this and maybe they're looking at different perspectives, but it's not official until it comes from HCD. And they're always, it seems like it's about six months to a year behind when the laws get established before the guidance comes out. But it definitely is, that one, everyone's scratching their heads on what does that mean? And what, what is it really talking about? And what is this area and the per capita and, you know? We're currently doing, going through the policies on the MT. We've had those meetings and workshops before on the work that's been done. And we're gonna be getting ready for another cycle, give it another shot. But the MT is still really hard for a lot of people to wrap their minds around. OLS is easy. You know how long you're being delayed sitting at an intersection. Vehicle miles traveled, what does that impact? What is, and I think that's why CECL has, you know, that they're looking at that because it relates to greenhouse gas. How much you're driving relates to what impact you're having on climate change in that law. And they tie it back to GHG. Level of service doesn't tie to GHG in the same way. And so they're really, that's why they changed the metric for CECL. So it's, this one, this particular law, very low vehicle traffic area. That one's gonna be hard to define. If it's the TASs, then we have a geographical area. Is it census block? Is it, what is it? You know, it's, I think it's gonna be a challenge to wrap our arms around it. And who typically with something like this, whoever steps out first and publishes something, you know, adopts an ordinance, everybody sort of follows that and looks at that and changes those things to make it functional for their city.
So Jennifer, I'm gonna be keeping this because this is like a great, like guidepost as we go through the year. So thank you for, this is a very good report that was put together by yourself and your staff. And I, I love the strategic approach, how the laws fit the, the housing element strategy. And I'd like to go back to something Mr. Baranowski said about the traffic. A lot of times when we look at these permits, there's a particular development and we look at a traffic flow for just that particular development. Is there like an overall traffic plan for the city? That, that, you know, just like how you have your planning department and your housing department? Is there like a traffic department that's looking at an overall five-year plan of the growth in the city and how the traffic flow and how we can mitigate traffic congestion and parking and that stuff? Or do we just look at it like individual project by individual project? Which doesn't seem to be the right approach.
Right now, that information's included in our circulation element. And with the way development is sort of taking off in the city, it needs, it needs a review. And so the city's gonna be undertaking, or planning to undertake a transportation master plan. And it will be the basis for an updated circulation, transportation element for the general plan. And that is where we're gonna be looking at all the new development that has happened, infrastructure needs on roads, congestion, all of that. And there's an RFP that's being developed. I'm not sure it's been released yet, but that is something that we'll be working with someone for, I, I believe the RFP says it's about a two-year process. So. And that, that is something that we definitely, it's time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I, I think the other thing that usually happens, and correct me if I'm wrong, when you get a new housing element, usually you have to go through all your basic infrastructure to make sure that it's in alignment. So not just the transportation, which I think by the transportation master plan, we're gonna cover more than streets. It'll be the paths, walking access, bicycle access, and all that kind of thing. Because that's the new street standard.
Complete streets. They hear that reference a lot, Vision Zero. It's related to the pedestrians.
Gotta go through water and you gotta go through sewer and storm drainage and all that. So housing element sort of trips that.
Yeah, that's great.
All that stuff off.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, are we now ready for director's report?
Yes, okay. So the one thing our, our chair had asked me to talk about and the commissioners, I had sent you all an email on this issue. We're going to council tomorrow night to adopt the housing element. We have gone through the first review for, through HCD on our element. Typically, historically, we don't adopt the element until we get a letter of, you're ready to be certified from HCD. And that means that they've done all the review, they're good with the entire document, all that's left to do is adopt it, turn it in and we get officially certified. Unfortunately, this cycle has been very different. It's been the shortest cycle that I've seen in five cycles. It, we got the RENA numbers confirmed in early 2021 and the document is due by January thirty-first of this year. Typically, there's a grace period where after that date, while the HCD is reviewing the document, nothing's gonna happen. Your, your marks aren't gonna be, you're out of compliance or anything like that. That no longer exists. And we've had that confirmed by HCD. There is a thing out there called the builder's remedy. And it is a part of the Housing Accountability Act that allows developments to be brought into a city that are inconsistent with both the zoning and general plan. Should a city not have an adopted housing element? Under the government code, we're allowed to adopt early before we get that certified letter from HCD. And so we're going to council tomorrow to adopt. Knowing that we're still gonna get additional comments on our second review. And we'll be bringing everything back for re-adoption once the document is final and we have that letter from HCD. But we do not want to be subject to builder's remedy. And that requires the document to be adopted by July, or by January thirty-first. We're not the only city that's doing this. Los Gatos, I believe, is doing it right now. Saratoga has a meeting scheduled for the thirty-first. Berkeley did it yesterday. And a number of cities across the state, I don't know all of them, but I'm picking them out of the paper and hearing things through my network of folks of who's adopting early. We do have a handout on the builder's remedy that's included in the council packet, if you want more information on that. And it's been around forever. In the Housing Accountability Act, no one's been using it. So you may have heard of some of the cities in Southern California that had a lot of applications well through the door as soon as their date passed. And so we want to make sure the city's protected as much as it can be. And while we don't have a lot of local control, we have some and we want to keep it. And so that's why we're going tomorrow, because otherwise we would have brought it to you first before we went to council. But it became readily apparent that we needed to make that January thirty-first date.
I think the other thing is, is when we were talking, you were telling me that we put in something that allows us to amend it.
Yes.
To respond to the HCD comments so we don't get caught up in what you would have to normally do to do an amendment to your housing element.
So the, the language says that staff is able to edit the document post-adoption. And we're following the example from the cities in Southern California that we've seen use this technique. And most of them have gone back and done a re-adoption. If we didn't do a re-adoption, we would still bring it all to you so you can see what their edits were. As I was telling someone today, their comments were not substantive. They, they didn't have any problem with our pipeline. The basic layout of, of what we were doing to meet the RENA. They actually asked us to consolidate some of our programs and policies. They thought we had too many. So we look at that letter, we, we got a B+, but they require an A to be certified. And so we just need to go that next step. After tomorrow night, we'll submit for the second review. They will likely take the full sixty days to do review. On the first review, we got our comments on the ninetieth day. Um, they will likely take the full sixty days to do review. On the first review, we got our comments on the ninetieth day. So they are also struggling with workload and staffing, um, our initial reviewer is no longer with H C D. Um, but we're fortunate that the reviewer who's done the last couple elements is still our reviewer. Um, stepped in and started helping our initial project manager, and she's still with, with Morgan Hill, so which is great. Um, so yeah, that's where we are in the housing element. It's, it's been a wild ride these last two years. Um, all the red lines that are going for, with the adoption packet are on the pay, um, housing element page. Um, you can see everything that's been done and, um. It, it's really not that much. If you go through the letter and we forwarded the letter out, it, we, we're, we're looking at it going, well. Okay, we'll fix it, can't you just, it's not that much, just check it off. Um, and we knew we weren't gonna, we knew we weren't gonna get checked off. By H C D on the first go-round, because this, this version and this program has been so complicated, all the new rules that they've added. Um, and it's frustrating because myself, Adam, Rebecca, we've all had elements that have always been accepted on the first try. And so we were really hoping, but hopefully the second try will be done. So. And other than that, um, we don't have a lot of applications getting ready, we do, we will be having meetings. Um, and I will let you know in advance if we're looking at canceling a future meeting, so. If there are any other items that you would like presentations on, have questions, as always, please don't hesitate. To reach out and we're always happy to answer any questions that you may have.
That, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Chair.